Father, it's great privilege and honor that we are able to come into thy presence. And we look to you, Father, to reach out and bless our county, bless our leaders, bless each individual that lives in our county. Father, would both help, happiness and safety, all our departments. We ask you bless us here tonight, Lord, and our leaders, our commissioners, going together with, make decisions here tonight that will affect our whole county, Lord. God, we ask that we sit in the midst of wisdom, guidance, and direction of thy holy experience. Father, we ask that have the protection upon them as they debate between themselves for the betterment of this county. And thank you for it, Father. We ask you bless them above them, and all our county. We actually say this in Christ Jesus' name, and all of God's people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, a motion to approve consent items.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Cardell.
You wanted to delete one of them.
Yeah, he gonna do that.
You do it now.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion to delete item 3B until May 16th.
Okay. We got a second in that? In discussion? A discussion, or a favor, aye? Aye. Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries. The minutes? Okay. It is time. We see a lot of nurses here. It gets y'all back to work. It won't take long, but we have some, a little, we're gonna read a little proclamation to y'all for what y'all do for Bladen County. And we're gonna read it, we're gonna present it to y'all. And if y'all, you wanna come up, can y'all come up and stand with us up here, and we'll read it? Y'all need to be seen. All of you, you look pretty good.
Good evening. We'd like to say good evening to each of you. We really appreciate what you do for the county and the citizens of Bladen County. And nursing is pretty tough, you have to do a lot of studying, county aids, so forth. We appreciate all that you do. We have about two-page proclamation here. It says, "Whereas the nearly 3.4 million registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meet the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, and whereas the American Nurses Association has a voice for the registered nurses of this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing delivery of primary and preventive healthcare, and whereas the renewed emphasis on primary and preventive healthcare will require better utilization of all of our nation's registered nursing resources, and whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients, and whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever before because of the aging of the American population, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and the explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasing complex need of healthcare consumers in this community, and whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the U.S. healthcare delivery system in the future, and whereas along with the American Nurses Association, the Bladen County Board of Commissioners has declared the week of May 6th through the 12th as Nurses' National Nurses Week, with the theme "Cultural Safety Is Starts With You." And you all start cultural safe. In celebration of the ways in which registered nurses strive to provide high-safe and high-quality patient care to map out the way to improve our healthcare system. Therefore, it is resolved that the Bladen County Board of Commissioners asks that all residents of Bladen County join in honoring the registered nurses who care for all of us, and to be in further resolve that the residents of Bladen County celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts in improving our healthcare system, and show our appreciation for the nation's registered nurses, not just during this week, but at every opportunity throughout the year, adopt the second day of May 2016. Congratulations to all of you again. This is a long proclamation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a picture. Thank you, and all your friends and fellow workers, y'all do a lot for Bladen. My aunt and uncle was a hospital all the time, and y'all maintain your life. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. I'll go right to work. Thank you. Right to work. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, we tabled item B. And now, the next item is individuals or delegations wishing to address the commissioners. Anybody? Anybody?
Good evening. My name is William Helfel. I'm resident here at Bladen County for the last five or six years. My concern is waiting out at young people. Time for school to get out. I'm gonna ask the commissioners, what kind of job programs are only docked, or money being allocated for finding jobs for these kids during the summer month, if they're out of school?
Zero.
I don't have to speak on that.
Zero.
Is it a reason why we don't have anything, anything for these kids to do? That's one of the things that we need to look at, or one of the problems we got in this county during the summer. You see a lot of kids, a lot of getting around, and some of them are even asking for jobs that they can't find. But being retired, I drive around the county, and I look at a lot of little things that these kids could do to beautify the county. How can we, as citizens, not only commissioners, as citizens, what can we do to help these young people?
I can, I'll answer it. I mean, I would refer them to N.C. Works, Ms. Ann Garrett. That's what the state puts money there, and that's what their jobs are, is to get people jobs. So that's where I would refer you, take anybody or everyone you know to N.C. Works. Ms. Ann Garrett.
Okay. So she's the, she is the person that would take care of anything like this?
I'm saying she's the one you need to talk to, Ms. Ann Garrett, N.C. Works.
Okay. If she don't give me the right answers, I'll be back.
Welcome back.
She's a manager there. Ms. Ann Garrett is the manager.
Okay. I know what she's saying. I know.
Well, you know, time has changed, but when we come along, we didn't have a problem in getting a job, and some of your mom and daddies had a job already lined up for you.
Oh, yes, I know.
So you know, maybe the mom and daddy need to look around and find their kids some jobs. We never had a day when they didn't have a job.
And that's one of the reasons I'm bringing it up, because I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, and I just called up a couple of weeks ago and asked them, do they still have a program for the kids? And they said, yes. They must sign up, and they work them, I think it's only like three weeks. But there's some money they can be putting in their pocket. So that was what brought me to here, and they're saying, why we can't do it here? But I will go see Ms. Garrett tomorrow.
Was that program in Baltimore, was it federal funding, or what, through the city?
No, it's through the city.
Through the city, Baltimore?
Right. Because one of the people who is part of that, that's who I called, and they said, I asked them, was it a federal thing? And they said, no, it's through the city.
Okay.
Said, the city's the one financing it. And I think the way the city, the way they do it, they go through the community and get a lot of organizations, and ask them to donate money and stuff, and they put so much money in, and then that's what the city is scribbling money out for the kids to work.
Could you get a copy of the program, and let us have a copy of it?
Sure.
Okay, do that, let me see it.
Ms. Garrett also, back when we, I think at the Coast Bank ran open, one of the generals from the state government, he also works in conjunction with Ms. Ann Garrett. And there are some funds that's available that come through the state government, and they're allocated to Ms. Ann Garrett. So I spoke to him, and said, yeah, Ms. Ann Garrett. All right. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward, address the commissioners in this time? If not, we have our guest, Mr. William Fenton, President of BCC, Blade Community College, and he's got some news. Come on, that's him.
Bring another chair up. We got Mr. Chairman. Good evening, I'm his board chair, Mr. Dennis Troy, and Jay Stanley. Mr. Jay Stanley is Vice President for Finance at the college, and we appreciate the opportunity to take a little time here to hear some of our needs for this year.
Dr. Phil, don't you tell us about your trip down to Kelly that you shared with me today? I was trying to tell that.
Sir, I did see you there in Dublin this afternoon. Mr. Willie Corbett, who is a quadriplegic man, lives in Kelly, and he has been a student of ours and finished the associate degree last year. The Community College recognizes one student for the whole system, 58 colleges, who is a chief success through great perseverance. And so, we submitted his name with the bio, what he done, what he achieved, what kind of person he was, and he won that. He won that award. First time Bladen Community College, oh, a student from this county, has been singled out as the student achievement.
That was in the old state?
Yes, sir. So he got $1,000, presumed $1,000, and a certificate, and a little plaque, and so on.
They were taking that down at the student place I saw him, and I wanted to share that with everybody.
It is right in Kelly. Thank you for that. What you see first on screen is, this is a college, and I know you've been there many times, and realize the beauty of it, it's protecting the spring, so you see how beautiful it is this time of year particularly. The next slide, we want to thank you for your support and the county's support for the recent bond that passed on March 15th. As you know, legislation was written in for the Community College system to get 350 million. Bladen Community College got a little bit over 6.5 million for new construction. We have, again, as you know, for the last, at least five years, if not longer, asked for a building, a new building on campus. The most recent building is our allied health building, the King Building, which was built in 1998. So, we have run out of space, we've run out of appropriate space for programs to advance and to improve and to add programs. So, years again, about five years ago, the commissioners employed Charles Bonney of LS3P in Wilmington to give us an idea of what we could build, believe it or not, for $6 million. We had the funds provided by our system to go forward, and what would your next building be, and how much would it be? And this is what they did five years ago. Now, it won't be exactly like this, but I want you to get a sense of what we can build for $6 million. We got $6.5 million. The trustees, at their meeting two weeks ago, agreed to employ Charles Bonney again, LS3P, to design this building. I talked to him recently, and he thinks for $6.5 million, we can get maybe 25,000 square feet, we'll see how that goes these days. And you have appropriate nurses in this, some of them still, didn't have to go back to work, Mr. Chair. So, we put that in there for several reasons, because the allied health programs and our nursing programs are the programs that so many students want at this time. So we're trying to add programs, to advance that. And this building will include two labs, we only have one science lab at the moment, and so this will include a chemistry lab, which we don't have, and a second biology lab in this building. So we know that going forward. It's hard to see this, but you got it in front of you, on the right side is a single story, and that will include a teaching auditorium for about 100 people, 115, 20, I believe. So we know that we're gonna have that, and some labs. Beyond that, there's community on campus that's working to determine what other programs will be in it. Our continuing to have folks who manage, will manage the building, they'll be moving over there from our building too. So, that's what I think it'll look like. Also, I want you to see revenue for the last year, 2014, 15, of $13.5 million. 83 percentage you see comes from federal funds, state aid, financial aid, and so on. The county's 5% of that, plus a percentage for 1% there for county capital. I have to say, I think that over the period I've been here now, the last eight years, you've been certainly generous in helping us to improve our capital needs, roof repair, roofs, sidewalk replacement, replacement of doors, so that they're handicapped accessible. And our alarm system, which you did prior to my coming, we've been able to have a system for the whole campus for alarms. So, this is our revenue total, with the county this year's over $800,000. And you see how much money comes into this county because of the Community College being here. What you have below that, you can't read it on the screen, but what you have, I want you to see, Bladen Community College is the third lowest funding per student of the 58 Community Colleges. I don't think we're the third smallest county, or the third candidate can afford the lease for our Community College system. The only two other schools that are funded less are Stanley Community College in Alamo and Noah Community College in Kinston. But they are larger schools, where Noah, for instance, has 4,000 students, they get $2.5 million. That's pretty good. Campus, pretty good-sized campus, and it's one of the recent seven community colleges. So it's an old campus. Stanley Community College is small, lower than Bladen, if you've been there, and they have fewer buildings. We've got 17 buildings, they have fewer than that, but they get $1.3 million with their allocation of $468 dollars per student. So, you see, they are smaller. But what you have below in the rest of the graph is how Bladen compares to other community colleges, some around us and some in other parts of the state. Sampson Community College, for instance, nearby, 1,800 students, get $784 dollars per student. Montgomery Community College, certainly in the small county there, in town Troy, with 1,000 students less than we have, fewer students than we have, $718 dollars per student. The state average is $991 dollars per student. I go to Fayette Tech, you may have seen this in the news recently, that's the third-largest community college in our system, with over 11,000, almost 12,000 students there, and $934. They're 32nd out of 58 presidents there, and the Board of Trustees are asking for over a half-million-dollar increase. We have certain students that they've added a center there in town that needs more funding. So I think you can see, Roanoke, Chauvin, and I'm sure all of you should have been to a hospital, North Carolina, and that county, which is certainly struggling, it's no industry in that county, zero. Prison now, and that's all they have, and they support their students by almost $1,200 dollars per student there. So I wanted to make the point of funding, and how difficult it is to manage with the funding that we have from the counties since I've been here. Next page, I think, is the summary which you have, and of course you have a more complete request from the county that our trustees have made to you regarding funding. Our general administration has a large increase, and you see what you budgeted, or what we have approved, and we've moved money into that for this year in operational, because we've hired, as you know, sheriff deputies, and the cost of that has increased. So that's a $92,000 increase for the whole year, for the half-year, it's $45,000. So we moved that, some money in to cover that. Let me share with you, because I'll get that in a minute, our faculty and our students, particularly our faculty, became very concerned about safety on campus. Early in the year, when there were so many incidents around at other community colleges, shootings, terrorist shootings, and so much going on in the country. We had very good security, but it was part-time. Terry Toller, who many of you know, retired highway patrol person, was an excellent person. We had part-time, he worked every day, and we felt very secure people, but he passed away suddenly. And it was after that that we began to realize, and that our staff were concerned about that. So going to the sheriff, and Mr. Simpson, I think he's still, he was here earlier, I wonder if you see him, the captain's secretary back there, worked with us, and we've got two deputies at work, so we have deputies on campus with guns, in uniform, cars available from 7:30 in the morning to 10:30 at night, and doing a review, which the sheriff's department did, and we've done as well, this certainly, the concern has gone down. And I didn't bring this, but I thought about it, our incidents, and we don't have serious incidents, but we have students from time to time, like any family would have, who discover and carry on and cause tension, we have to deal with that. Our incidents have gone down to almost nothing, just zero, in the time that we've had the deputies here. So it is, we've been able to provide the support we need for students, without having to deal with incidents, and our administration dealing with that. Once we did back into the sheriff's car, so we had, it's a big dent in that car, that was about the only thing happened last month on campus. But you see the request, we realize it is a large increase, $106,000 increase, so we're certainly asking for support from you all to be able to maintain what we have and continue forward. The general administration also included a request for a custodian. We have two custodians for 17 buildings, I think that's on the next page, we go to the next page, right? Two custodians to maintain 17 buildings, $50,000 per feet. So we all help with that, but it would be helpful to have it done. We've been requesting this for several years now, and haven't had that funding. As you see, the building's going forward, and maintaining that building with heating and air conditioning, and maintenance of that, and so forth, seem to me prudent to increase our budget, some will be able to take care of that, whether they have this large increase once that comes online in a couple of years. We believe, or it's in the government's budget, and we understand, also in the House and Senate, 2% increase for state employees, and so we're asking for that, for county employees as well, the number that we have there. Some of the improvements we need for capra are roof replacement, our auditorium is failing, and that's gonna be over $100,000 cost to replace that roof. And campus lighting, we just done a student survey of our campus services and lighting comes up consistently as being inadequate over the years. Mrs. Penny, if I've forgotten anything, you know, the Biden Bear Nigel, you deal with it daily, and as you know, we send it to you every month, is how we're dealing with that. So I think we're prudent, we are on target this year to use all the resources you've given us, and we're prudent, aren't we? Okay, you want to add for this?
I guess I would say, it may seem like a wish list, however, that's a very realistic budget. I think that depends, it's the ones that are most critical right now, security, and that's obviously, we want to continue those deficits in those areas. The other expenses are basically remaining the same. Yeah, our maintenance costs continue to go up, our age facilities, I'm sure you all have to deal with that here. As I said, we are prudent with the money, we try to manage it well, but we also want to provide security for our students, and that's number one priority here, and the capital needs, we have that, are evident.
The request we have at $914,409, we would, and we're not losing it, our room is always steady, so we expect to have in room similar to what we have here, $1387. That would raise us $659 dollars per student, which is still low, but it would adequately serve our needs for next year. Mr. Chairman?
First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners, because we're struggling as well, and we thank y'all. Each town, we come in every year. When we, 58 Community Colleges in the state, and we three from the bottom, we continue the need for support. Because at Bladen Community College, we give students and students jobs, hopes, and opportunities. And all you have to do is put what just happened with the history with the high school girl that's east Bladen, the Houston girl, she's coming out of school with a diploma, and she's coming out with a two-year degree. Those are the kind of things that we do for the students of Bladen Community College and Bladen County. So we continue the need for support here. If y'all cry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I had a question, that $92,000, that's for two deputies, right?
Yes, sir. We have one that's from 7:30 to about 2:00, and there's an overlap, about 30 minutes, and the second is from 2:00 to 10:30. And they're doing very well, let me say, three portions of that, and two we have there.
And the sheriff's definitely supporting us on our town campuses.
Any commission want to say something else? Thank you. Consider it, I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phil.
On the agenda next, we have a advisory board appointment for Carbis Creek Fire District. There's two appointments, must have placed the board.
Let me table that.
Table it, okay.
Let me get the file.
Motion tabled?
Yes, sir.
Second?
I don't know.
Okay. Hold it, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Tabled?
I'll have it next time.
Yes, ma'am. Item 7, advisory board appointments from the May meeting, please look at this, and next minute we'll interact. Next, county manager Greg Martin, you gonna come forward and give us some county update?
I'd like to begin by briefly reviewing the calendar for the months of May and June. And mention that on Thursday, 12, at 17:00 p.m., the Bladen Fire Association, White Lake Fire Department, there is a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting scheduled for 4:30 p.m. on May 16th, before the regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30. County Assembly Day is scheduled in Raleigh toward the 18th, and you are invited to attend that. And offices will be closed on Monday, the 30th, in service over the middle of May holiday.
Ray, relays the office Friday, I mean Saturday, May 7th. Living the life.
Living the life?
Basically, living the life.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jim, may I?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The town district here having their regular May Day activities on Saturday, beginning at 9:00 o'clock, on the 14th. No, we invited me, I look like to come down.
There's a fresh service scheduled for 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday 6th. There's a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting scheduled for 5:00 p.m. that evening on 6th, as well as Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:30 that evening. The Fire Association meeting will be at 7:00 on White Lake on Thursday the 9th. The other commissioners will be on the 20th at 6:30 p.m. There are no questions on the calendar. Moving to item B.
We recall that at a recent meeting, there was discussion regarding the residency requirement that is included in the Bladen County Personnel Policy for employees. It pertains specifically to department heads. There was conversation about waiving that policy in a couple of instances. And so, we have researched that matter and basically come back to the board with two options for consideration. The first is to delete the residency requirement from the personnel policy.
nursing programs are the programs that so many students want at this time. So we're trying to add programs to advance that. And this building will include two labs. We only have one science lab at the moment. And so this will include a chemistry lab, which we don't have, and a second biology lab in this building. So we know that going forward. On the, it's hard to see this, but you've got it in front of you, on the right side is a single story, and that will include a teaching auditorium for about a hundred people, a hundred and fifteen, twenty, I believe. So we know that we're gonna have that and some labs. Beyond that, there's a committee on campus that's working to determine what other programs will be in it. Our continuing ed folks who manage, will manage the building, they'll be moving over there from building two. So that's what I think it'll look like. Also wanted you to see revenue for last year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, of thirteen and a half million dollars. Eighty-three percentage you see comes from federal funds, state aid, financial aid, and so on. The county's five percent of that, plus a percentage for one percent there for county capital. I have to say, I think that over the period I've been here now, the last eight years, you've been certainly generous in helping us to improve our capital needs. Roof repair, roofs, sidewalk replacement, replacement of doors, so that they're handicapped accessible. So, and our alarm system, which you did prior to my coming. We've been able to have a system for the whole campus for alarms. So this is our revenue total, with the county this year's over eight-hundred thousand dollars. And you see how much money comes into this county because of the community college being here. What you have below that, you can't read it on the screen, but what you have, I want you to see, Bladen Community College is the third lowest funding per student of the fifty-eight community college. I don't think we're the third smallest county or the third candidate can afford the lease for our community college system. There are only two other schools that are funded less, are Stanley Community College in Albemarle and Noah Community College in Kinston. But they are larger schools. Noah, for instance, has four thousand students. So they get two and a half million. That's pretty good. Camp, pretty good-sized campus, and it's one of the recent seven community colleges. It's an old campus. Stanley Community College is small, lower than Bladen, if you've been there, and they have fewer buildings. We've got seventeen buildings, they have fewer than that. But they get one point three million with their allocation of four hundred and sixty-eight dollars per student. So you see, they are smaller. But what you have below in the rest of the graph is how Bladen compares to other community colleges. Some around us and some in other parts of the state. Sampson Community College, for instance, nearby, eighteen hundred students, gets seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars per student. Montgomery Community College, certainly in the small county there, in town Troy, with thousands of students, less students, and we have fewer students, and we have seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars per student. The state average is nine hundred and ninety-one dollars per student. I go to Fayetteville Tech, you may have seen this in the news recently, that's the third-largest community college in our system, with over eleven, twelve, almost twelve thousand students there, and nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. They're thirty-second out of fifty-eight presidents there, and the board of trustees are asking for over a half-million-dollar increase. We have certain students, and they've added a center there in town that needs more funding. So I think you can see, Rhode Island, and I'm sure all of you should have been to a hospital, North Carolina, and that county, which is certainly struggling. It's no industry in that county, zero. Prison now, and that's all they have, and they support their students by eleven, almost twelve hundred dollars per student there. So I want to make the point of funding and how difficult it is to manage with funding that we have from the counties since I've been here. Next page, I think, is the summary which you have. Of course, you have a more complete request from the county that our trustees have made to you regarding funding. Our general administration has a large increase, and you see what you budgeted or what we have approved, and we've moved money into that for this year in operational, because we've hired, as you know, sheriff deputies, and the cost of that has increased. So that's a ninety-two thousand dollar increase for the whole year. For the half-year, it's forty-five thousand dollars. So we moved that, some money in to cover that. Let me share you, because I'll get that in a minute. Our faculty and our students, in particular, our faculty became very concerned about safety on campus. Early in the year, when there were so many incidents around at other community colleges, shootings, threats of shootings, and so much going on in the country. We had very good security, but it was part-time. Jay Chover, whom many of you know, a retired highway patrol person, was an excellent person. We had part-time, he worked every day, and we felt very secure people, but he passed away suddenly. And it was after that that we began to realize, and our staff were concerned about that. So going to the sheriff, and Mr. Simpkins, I think he's still, he was here earlier, I believe you see, Captain Simpkins back there, worked with us, and we've got two deputies at work. So we have deputies on campus with guns, in uniform, cars available from seven-thirty in the morning to ten-thirty at night. And doing a review, which the sheriff's department did, and we've done as well, this certainly is, concern has gone down. And I didn't bring this, but I thought about it. Our incidents, and we don't have serious incidents, but we have students from time to time, like any family would have, who discover and carry on and cause tension, we have to deal with that. Our incidents have gone down to almost nothing, just zero, in the time that we've had deputies here. So we've been able to provide support we need for students without having to deal with incidents, and our administration dealing with that. Once we get back into the sheriff's car, so we have, it's a big dent in that car, that was about the only thing happened last month on campus. But you see the request, we realize it is a large increase, a hundred and six thousand dollar increase. So we're certainly asking for support from you all to be able to maintain what we have and continue forward. The general administration also included a request for a custodian. We have two custodians for seventeen buildings. I think that's on the next page, we go to the next page. Two custodians to maintain seventeen buildings, fifty thousand square feet. So we all help with that, but it would be helpful to have it done. We've been requesting this for several years now, and haven't had that funding. As you see the building going forward and maintaining that building with heating and air conditioning and maintenance of that and so forth, it seemed to me prudent to increase our budget, some to be able to take care of that, whether they have this large increase once that comes online in a couple of years. We believe, or it's in the government's budget, and we understand also in the House and Senate, two percent increase for state employees, and so we're asking for that for county employees as well, the number that we have there. Some of the improvements we need for capra, our roof replacement, our auditorium is failing, and that's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollar cost to replace that roof. And campus lighting, we just on a student survey of our campus services and lighting comes up consistently as being inadequate over the year. Mrs. Simpkins, have I forgotten anything? You know the budget, and I do, you deal with it daily. And as you know, we send it to you every month, is how we're dealing with that. So I think we're prudent, we are on target this year to use all the resources you've given us. We're prudent, aren't we? Do you want to add for this?
I guess I would say, it may seem like a wish list, however, it's a very realistic budget. I think the other thing could be, to the ones that are most critical right now, is security. And that's obviously, we want to continue those deficits in those areas. The other expenses are basically remaining the same. You know, our maintenance costs continue to go up, our age facilities, I'm sure you all have to deal with that here. We're, as I said, we are prudent with the money, we try to manage it well, but we also want to provide security for our students, and that's number one priority here, and the capital needs, we have left, are evident.
The request we have at nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, we would, and we're not losing it, our balance always steady, so we expect to have, in terms of what we have here, thirteen eighty-seven, that would raise us to six hundred and fifty-nine dollars per student, which is still low, but it would adequately serve our needs for next year. Mr. Chairman.
First of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners, because the struggle is real, and we thank you all. Easttown, we come in every year. When we, fifty-eight community college in the state, and we're three from the bottom, we continue the need for support. Because at Bladen Community College, we give students and citizens jobs, hopes, and opportunities. And all you have to do is, just happened with the history with the high school girl at East Bladen, the Houston girl. She's coming out of school with a diploma, and she's coming out with a two-year degree. Those are the kind of things that we do for the citizens of Bladen Community College and Bladen County. So we continue the need for support here, and here I cry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question, that ninety-two thousand, that's for two deputies, right?
Yes, sir. We have one that's from seven-thirty till about two, and there's an hour, like, about thirty minutes, and seven is from two to ten-thirty. And they're doing very well, let me say, very fortunate, and two we have.
And the sheriff is definitely supporting those, our campuses.
Any commission want to say something else, Dr. Kent? Thank you. Consider it, I sure will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kent.
On the agenda next, we have a Board of Board appointments for Carver Creek Fire District. There's two appointments, what's the place of the board?
Let me table that.
Table it, okay.
If I can get the phone.
Motion table?
Yes, sir.
Second?
No, it's not.
Okay. Hold it in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Tabled.
I'll have it next time.
Yes, ma'am. Item seven, Board of Board appointments for May meeting, please look at this, and next meeting we'll adapt. Next county manager, Greg Martin, you're gonna come forward and give us some cattle update?
I'd like to begin by briefly reading the calendar for the months of May and June. And mention that on Thursday, twelve, at seven PM, the Bladen Fire Association might be at the White Lake Fire Department. There's a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting scheduled for four-thirty PM on May sixteenth, before the regularly scheduled meeting at six-thirty. County Assembly Day is scheduled in Raleigh toward the eighteenth, and you are invited to attend that. And offices will be closed on Monday, the thirtieth, in the service of the Norway Holiday.
Greg, we lay the office Friday, I mean Saturday, May the seventh. Living in the West.
Living in the West.
Basically, in the West.
Living every June?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The child is here having their regular May Day activities on Saturday, beginning at nine o'clock.
Okay.
On the fourth. Well, I would like to, it looks like it's coming down.
Beginning June, there's a fresh service scheduled for eight AM on Monday at six. There's a Board of Equalization and Review Meeting scheduled for five minutes that evening on the sixth, as well as Board of Fisher meetings at six-thirty. The Fire Association meeting will be at seven AM on Monday, on Thursday the ninth. The other commissioners will meet on the twentieth at six-thirty PM. There are no questions on the calendar. Moving to item B. We called it at a recent meeting, there was discussion regarding those residency requirements that is included in the Bladen County personnel policy for employees. It pertains specifically to department heads. There was conversation about waiving that policy in a couple of instances. And so we have researched that matter and basically come back to the board with two options for consideration. The first is to delete the residency requirement from the personnel policy, and that would be broken. The second is to add wording that any aspects of the residency requirement may be waived at the discretion of the Board of County officials. I've talked with Diane Jeffries at the School of Government about this, and she said that is, that would be legal to have that type of statement in the policy. Where it can become problematic is if you waive the policy in certain instances, and then you try to hold another person later to put the policy, if they, if there's some rationale in their mind that they should take and file a grievance, then that could create an issue for the county. But either, either option would be. This is more discussion than this part, I mean, tonight.
I prefer option two.
For consideration.
With the option, option, with the option, what, what, on the advertisement that goes out, and we're used to listening to people to use the form, will that be a part of the advertisement, that you must have residential content to the county, according to the county policy?
Well, that's a, that's a good question, and if, that's another topic that we, that we have in discussion. If the requirement is listed in the advertisement for the position, and there are individuals in nearby towns or communities who may be interested in a position with Bladen County but would not be in a position to relocate, then they likely would not file application, and we'd never know that they may have an interest in the position. So there's an unknown factor with it as well, when ultimately the county may be willing to waive that requirement, it's just we never know. So that's, that's a good, that's a good question.
Moving on, and advertisement, that must be included in the.
Yeah, it's not legally required to be, but it would definitely be part of it. If it was required, if it was, if it remained in the policy, or if it remains in the policy, then it definitely would be a topic of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, what is the policy to create that the surrounding county?
Most of the, I don't know, I don't, yeah, I don't know exactly, but I know many communities don't have, don't have this requirement, but there are some that do.
I'd like to ask to, I mean, how it would affect the, affect the, on candidates.
What, what the, uh.
It's called the.
Option two, because I have, you know, better one. I hate to lose good candidates, because that's what the people in other counties are not, making that kind of requirement.
Now, my comment is, you know, we sit here as Bladen County citizens, and we're trying to recruit industry and business and everything else, and majority of our CEOs and high-paying professionals don't even live in Bladen County. So why, I mean, we need to start utilizing and using this policy, and you could easily put on there Greg, when he sent the advertising out, that the board, if you have a conflict, the board will look at that. I mean, you don't need to take county tax dollars and send them somewhere else unless you absolutely have to.
Well, smart, but us having the residency requirement, isn't that kind of reducing our pool of good qualified candidates?
Well, I don't know, that's just.
Well, we need to look at what other counties are doing. I'd hate to be on the count of this, making such a requirement that's in this region, or in this area of the state, now inability to attract strong candidates because of this residency requirement. So why don't we look at?
Well, we've been doing it.
Other counties.
We've been doing that, Dr. Blaine. We've, uh, have this policy in effect where they have to move, but now, we got that for one time, but we need to, we need to make a decision now about it.
What I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, we've had it.
Yeah, we've had it.
But we have been unable at certain times to attract candidates in certain fields, specificity, and because of that, we have had to waive this requirement, and that has happened right recently. And if that continues to happen, then we would be forced almost to do something about the residency requirement, is what I'm saying. If we way out of line with that requirement and we're unable to attract candidates, then we need to take a serious look at.
I'd like to ask one question of the chairman. Could you look into the matter, the discussion, come back to us, and let us know what's the legal application, and what's the probability that someone, Bladen, student, if they decide and they want to sue the county, not be able to have this waived, have we waived it from this, that?
Mr. Cog, there's Greg from Talladega, to the government. We don't need to tie legal dollars up and research from what ends to the government from Talladega.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to speak to that, maybe in more detail. If it was, if the Board of Commissioners did hold an employee to that requirement, and the, the only way that it would become a legal matter, a legal complication, is if the person felt that he or she was in a protected class under federal law, then that person could bring the case against them. So it could be, it could be millions of protective measures, age, race, it could be a variety of issues. But that stuff, so the county would definitely be mindful of those types of things when making a decision.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, if you say that, one, the one legal application would be in the public, if you disagree with that.
But it's legal, I mean, it rocks the legal.
Well, I personally don't care what other counties do. I think, I, I care about what's best for Bladen County. And if we can get directors, that they, they're the highest-paid people in the county government, and they need to be on the streets, and they need to be visible, unless you've got a circumstances that prevents that. And I don't have a problem making a decision every time one, if we have to waive one.
But it seems like, though, if we get rid of that policy, we don't have to worry about it, we might get better candidates for, for these jobs here. That's not the history of Bladen County. Well, because most of you, most of you graduates, they, you don't come back, so if we can broaden our view of those possibilities of people that are looking for employment, it'd be best, best for Bladen. I think we need to do what's best for the county. And if we're limiting our, our scope of candidates, then that's not good for the county.
What's best for the county is keeping these tax dollars in Bladen County.
I hate to lose good people simply because they have to stay in Bladen County. We need to waive a person's ability to provide us quality services versus where that person and their family live.
That's what option two does.
I, I do care, I want quality people to head up these departments. Society has become much more mobile and that kind of thing, and what, 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 we saw that was required, we used to require teachers to go to church and all this stuff, it's thought outdated, and you kind of want to do what's necessary to get quality people to head up certain departments.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing. My thing, when I, when I've been, Greg and I spoke about this, and we looked at what we have as a county to offer, people coming into the county, and even, when you look at someone having to relocate, at an expense of eight, nine, ten thousand dollars, and come and move into a new home, and our salary is one thing that we say, we don't attract the best of people because of the salary. So, and, and essentially, you put the, the movement into it, you just went into that salary and cut ten thousand dollars out of it. So that makes the job even look, that doesn't make that's a crack.
We've had, we've had, this happened twice, three times really. Twice. One time was a library director, and the state was gonna pull our money if we didn't do that, so we had to, had to hire that lady from out of state. The tax lady was coming to Bladen County moving.
Yeah, we waived that.
And the guy from the Health Department accepted the job and wanted to know if we were gonna waive it. He was willing to stay in Bladen County. Are you looking for a motion, or you just?
No.
Let's move on.
We table it. We can table that, it's what he wanted to do.
Why are you not requiring the move to Bladen?
Hey, that's where you work, that's where you spend your tax dollars.
Spend who's tax dollars?
Let's move, let's move on.
I believe we talked about it.
We talked, Greg and I talked about it, but no action, taking action next meeting, is that okay with the board?
Well, I, again, if the chairman will allow me to do so, I, again, would like to know how many counties continue to keep this policy.
I'd be ready to find out for us. Talking about our surrounding counties.
Why don't we do, yeah.
Yeah, he'll do that, of course. We're gonna meet next meeting on this item, we can be more clear about it, probably.
We didn't ask any of those counties when we put this policy on.
We had it a long time ago, Jim. But now we're having to waive it, having to waive it, we had it in the policy, man, you had to keep waiving it. Can't you see why you're having to waive it, that people just see this as then antiquated?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
All the motions that we table this until the next meeting.
Motion to table.
Yes, sir.
Second? Hold it in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? I'll have it. Motion table the next meeting. Thank you. Now, the next item is going to closed session, consider entering closed session in the quarters with NCGS. Second, any client privilege, and NCG, I have to read this, personnel, need a motion.
I just made a motion.
I didn't hear you, sir. I was reading, I was reading. Mrs. Smith made a motion, seconded by Mr. Cog, Mr. Bullock. Aye, favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no? Closed session.